To be giving thanks for starting with the county board meeting, I call the meeting of November 22, 2022 of the DuPage County Board to order. And if I may, I would like to ask Member Lynn LaPlante, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and ask everyone else, please, to remain standing for invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please let me invite Chaplain Andrew Hogan from our DuPage Care Center, very special spiritual person here on our campus, to lead us in invocation today. Chaplain?
Good morning, and thank you, Chairman. Before we begin our reflection and our prayer, let's take a moment of pause to offer a moment of silence for the victims in Colorado as we stand against senseless violence. We gather together in a spirit of service, not to ourselves, but rather, we are driven by a higher purpose, one of civic duty to the residents of DuPage County. We apply our education, our experience, and our expertise to this shared goal of serving our county community. Our dedication to others gives honor to our work. May we ever be mindful of this amidst any frustration or challenge. As we gather to continue our noble goal, our higher purpose, we acknowledge our higher power. For many of us in the room, that is the divine. If you are not a person of faith, let us reflect. If you are a person of faith, let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, as we come before you, focus our minds and hearts upon your will. Remove the many distractions that dissipate our energy. Remind us of our special purpose, gathered together in your name, to be stewards and servants. Come to us and be with us, enter our heart, mind, and spirit. Guide us what we are to do and where we ought to tend. Show us what we must accomplish in order that with your help, we may be able to please you in all things. May you alone be the author of our decisions. Grant us a spirit of humility, that we may seek to serve. Grant us a spirit of gratitude, that we may recognize each moment as an opportunity to serve and each person as a gift and blessing. Grant us a spirit of patience for those who test our goodwill. Grant us a spirit of fortitude for the times when we face fatigue. Continue to bless the work that we do in your name. Continue to bless all the employees and departments of DuPage County. Bless the leadership of the county board and the special residents of the care center. May we continue to be good stewards of this region and its resources. Unite us to your will as we serve you and the people of DuPage County. That was for everyone, but I was going to, on my own, and then I've also been asked by a number of people to, in particular, give you a special blessing, Chairman, on your last county board presiding. Lord, we give thanks for the tremendous blessing that has come from the work of the many years. May you still anoint and use us always in all seasons. We pray that this would be a new beginning. May your hope arise and your vision be our guide. May a new rhythm emerge, one that forms a beautiful balance between rest and engagement with life. And now, Lord, we ask for your blessing on your servant, Daniel, and his family. May there always be good health, joy and abundance, peace in heart and mind, and from this day forward and each day that follows, in your name, Lord. Amen. And I will just personally ask that you accept our gratitude on behalf of the care center for your support. In conversation with your wife, Julie, she, to quote her, said, "You always had the ability to choose and focus the things that matter the most." And in my very biased opinion, the people at the care center are those who really matter the most because they are the ones who are most in need. And so I deeply thank you for that, and may God bless you always.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chad Pierce, would you be kind enough, please, to call the roll?
Member Chaplain?
Here.
Member Covert?
Here.
Member DeSart?
Here.
Member DeCiani?
Here.
Member Ekoff?
Here.
Member Garcia?
Here.
Member Hart?
Here.
Member Krajewski?
Here.
Member LaPlante?
Here.
Member Ozog?
Here.
Member Phillips?
Here.
Member Pachalski?
Here.
Member Renahan?
Here.
Member Rutledge?
Here.
Member Schworzy?
Here.
Member Selman?
Here.
Member Tornatori?
Here.
And Member Zay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. We move on to the next order of business entitled Chairman's Report. I have a few remarks I'd like to offer in the beginning. We have some presentations, then I have a few remarks I'd like to offer at the end of the report. First and foremost, as we kick off our transportation-themed presentations today, transit from the RTA and from Metra, I think it's fitting that before they begin, we punctuate the good news that came from yesterday's announcement regarding the final go-ahead for the O'Hare Airport expansion plans. These are plans that go back some time, part of the O'Hare Modernization Act, realignment of the runways, a lot of different thoughts went into this particular plan in this particular phase of the development of the property. The Federal Aviation Administration officially approved the Terminal Area Plan, which seeks to modernize and expand the capacity to serve more customers at O'Hare. This is a plan, as you may know, that has been long contemplated in years in the making. Now it can move forward. The work on the Western Access, which is a big, big part in a larger chapter to be told in the future, the work on that has begun some 30 years ago. I know that from personal experience. 12 years ago, we pushed really hard for the I-390 conversion of the Elgin-O'Hare into a tollway that ultimately provides what they had been calling a bypass, and we convinced them that it's not a bypass, that is access to O'Hare, and they've embraced it. They've embraced it. So I want to thank those that worked together in a bipartisan effort, cooperation with the Chicago mayors, going back to Mayor Daley. He was a big supporter of the Western Access and our regional airport, Mayor Emanuel and Mayor Lightfoot. I was very pleased to see the projects ultimately leading to a preliminary version of Western Access incorporated into this approved plan that was in the news. In addition to renovating terminals and buildings and building hotels, the plan calls for the opening of an entrance to O'Hare from the west side, which is huge. And initially, an eight-level employee parking structure and employee screening facility will be built on the west side. We have vigorously advocated for this structure as a first step toward a passenger entry from the west side, ultimately a terminal as well. In support of this Western Access, DuPage and the Illinois Toll Highway Authority continue to work collaboratively on the ramp access to the west side of the airport, leading to eventual passenger access. This entrance is planned to connect with Route 390 and I-490 ramps expected to be completed into the property in 2025. This is great news for so many leaders who have continued the push for Western Access, the high-paying jobs this project will bring and has already brought to our communities bordering the airport will be in the tens of thousands. It's great news for DuPage, and it demonstrates the value of bipartisan cooperation and leadership here and in the city, and particularly with our friends at the tollway and the Chicago Department of Aviation. I ask this and future boards to support and advocate for this project. Together, we can contemplate a future with strong economic activity that benefits communities and our residents. And with that, I'd like to move right into the RTA budget presentation, dealing with transportation, or we like to use the term transit, right, to say that there's a qualitative difference between road building and public transit. But road building also contemplates buses and public transit as well. Leanne Redden is going to join us here, the executive director of the RTA. And Bee Rayna Hickey, are you here as well to join us up at the podium?
No, I have to announce, she's retired.
She's got, oh my gosh. You've got to handle it all.
But I'm joined by my interim CFO.
Well, we welcome Leanne. We are eager to hear more about the recovery plans for the RTA, so we thank you for being here and please, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members. I am going to ask you a little bit of indulgence because I have to cover two things in today's presentation, not just the budget that I usually kind of go through, but I also have to cover the upcoming strategic plan that we are developing for the region as required by state statute. Chairman Dillard, who is from DuPage, and your RTA board member, David Andalio, had to send their regrets. They both have other commitments that they could not adjust to make it today, so you just get me. And my very competent staff, we've got, joined by my interim CFO, Bill Lackman, and Kyle Whitehead, we're on staff who are also here to answer any questions or have any additional conversations even after this. So, as I mentioned, if we can just go next slide, please. So, as I think you all know, transit systems operated by CTA, Metro, and Pace, and they continue to make steady recovery. You're going to hear a lot more detail from Metro in a few minutes. But you probably heard me say this before, but I think it can't be said enough that the, you know, transit really provided a significant lifeline during the very dark times of the pandemic. And our data shows that during that time, those who were riding the transit system were essential workers, people of color, and residents experiencing low incomes. We respect and really appreciate the role that our colleagues from the three service boards also provided in sustaining that service, that critical lifeline service across our entire region. So in close collaboration with the three service boards, we've worked to provide stable funding for the transit system, really for the last 48 years, but very importantly, through the really trying times of the pandemic. After the pandemic began, we led a three-step recovery process that allocated more than $3 million to CTA, Metro, and Pace in the federal COVID relief funds, and that really is what has been underpinning and supported their operations. This fall, we started to see combined ridership for, across all three systems, actually kind of come back and surpass the million rider per day, average weekday ridership, which is a milestone that we haven't seen since pre-pandemic. But ridership is still down significantly. I don't think you need me to tell you that COVID changed everything, and it certainly has made permanent impacts and changes across our transit system. The RTA and our partners have already begun adapting in many ways, and you'll hear a little bit more from Metro, but the three operators specifically have also already been doing service modifications, continuing with capital projects and construction throughout the whole pandemic, but also providing new fare offerings such as the $100 Metro Monthly Pass, as well as the region-wide $30 Regional Connect Pass that all three agencies are piloting right now. And you'll see in our forthcoming strategic plan offers even more adaption and innovative ways that we are trying to make the transit system a better experience for all riders in the region. So next slide. As I, my board, and staff have really spent the last two years focusing specifically on funding, and before I walk through some of these numbers, I just want to say plainly that the bottom line is that the transit system, the model, the funding model for our transit system, has become far too reliant on fare revenue, and that is just not a sustainable model for the region going forward. Some details on this budget here. For 2023, the regional budget totals $3.6 billion. On the left, you can see the assumed revenue sources. The service board operating revenue, which comes from rider fares, comprises about 18% of the overall budget, a much smaller share than we had historically seen, and that's really due to the ongoing impacts of the pandemic and the loss of ridership. The fare revenue falls short because, the shortfall of fare revenue has been replaced by the federal COVID relief funding that also compromises for this coming year's budget about 19% of the 23 operations. On the right-hand side, you can see a breakdown of where those expenses are spent. CTA comprises about just over half of the region's budget, followed by Metro, then Pace Suburban Bus Service, and then the ADA Paratransit Service, and then there's a small sliver for RTA debt, which is basically debt that the RTA floats in dry capital times, if you will, to keep the service boards actually with some monies to actually keep sustaining some capital investments. The RTA's agency budget represents less than 1% of the overall regional budget. So next slide. And as we look forward to the future, we can see, as I mentioned, that our over reliance on fares is just not sustainable. Finance teams from the RTA, the three service boards, and the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning worked this year to create a 10-year financial plan that's really informing our strategic planning work that we're currently working on, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. These finance teams have met bi-weekly since April. Their work considers multiple factors, including our current 10-year financial plan and budgets, our scenario planning work we did with stakeholders as part of the COVID recovery efforts, as well as our current budgets and ridership projections. It's been also supported by some transportation consultants, national consultants, that have helped with deep experience, really, to just help us validate our information. The estimate that shows us that in 2026, we could have a regional budget deficit of $730 million annually, which is about 10%, about 20%, I should say, of our overall operating budget. And I want to underline that that is an annual number, and it assumes just the current levels of service and really no significant changes or improvements, changes to fare structure or anything like that. The reason for this deficit is essentially twofold. First, expenses are higher. The service board's assumed growth of 3.9% per year is higher than we've experienced over the previous decade. And in the near term, I think the easiest way to think about that is inflation, not a surprise to any of us. But inflation is an ongoing challenge, but labor also is a dominant expense category in their budgets, and labor comprises of about 70% of their operating expenses. So attracting and retaining new talent is a big issue across our industry. It's not unique to us just here in Chicago, and it requires that we pay competitive salaries and benefits to our employees, especially the frontline employees. And that's probably the simplest way to think about one of the reasons why the expenses are growing. The second reason is for the deficit is that fewer people are riding transit, and we anticipate that this is a lasting impact on the transit system as the way people commute aren't going to really come back to the way they were pre-pandemic. And we don't anticipate that ridership is going to come back anytime soon, even before 2026, or even potentially over the next decade, to the full levels that we had before. Each agency continues to work tirelessly to work to bring back riders, and we hope that happens faster than we are sort of planning and anticipating, but the fact remains that it's still a large number, and it addresses the system, as I mentioned, as it only operates today, and doesn't consider improvements that we really know that are needed. We're not alone. Last month, I was at our national conference for all the public transportation associations, large and small, across the country, and we see large and small transit systems facing very similar situations. Our peer agencies across the country are, in some cases, even in a worse situation than we are. And unfortunately, while there's some comfort knowing we're not alone, no one's really come up with that sort of magic bullet to work out how to really solve this problem. And I just want to highlight this so that you know that the funding gap is really the major crisis that we are facing in our transit system. But we also believe that improvements across the system in both operations and on the capital side are absolutely critical to the continued recovery of the transit system and the support and an underpinning really for our region's economy. So next slide. Since beginning the development of our regional strategic plan, we have been very intentional about engaging stakeholders region-wide and providing really transparent feedback throughout that whole process. This focus of broad engagement really resulted in the plan being developed with direct input from hundreds of people and feedback from thousands across the entire region. We recruited more than 100 people as well from 70 different organizations to actually actively participate over a three-month period in some very detailed stakeholder working groups that were focused on service, infrastructure, and funding, as well as having two technical working groups, as I mentioned, working on the 10-year financial plan, as well as the long-term capital improvements that we need. County staff here, I want to thank the county because they were very engaged in our work, and we will continue to engage stakeholders across the region as we go forward in group and one-on-one conversations. We've also had public surveys that have garnered thousands of responses from residents. And we have joined events across the region, community events, you can see some of the pictures on these slides here, where we've met riders and just residents of the region, where they're at, and asked them, what do they think about the transit system, whether they ride it or not, and give us that feedback. Both as an opportunity to educate them, but also tell them about some of the challenges we're facing. We've shared that input also very transparently with our board, also via our agency blog, as well as through the media and other social media challenges that we have, channels, I should say, that we have. What began really as broad engagement became really a process of co-creating this strategic plan, and we've really been gratified, not just for the overwhelming support for the process that we engaged in, but the fact that there is very strong and sustained interest in improving the transit system across our entire region. So real quick, on the next slide, I will just highlight what we have developed, and we're calling our Agenda for Advocacy and Action. This list here identifies seven topic areas that are sort of bigger, broader, bigger policy changes that we know we have to tackle to support and improve the transit network. But many of these, we really need the support of other stakeholders, county governments, local governments, other key stakeholders in the region, to help us tackle these bigger problems, and these will be longer-term things that we know we need to keep working on. On the next slide, you'll see our list of what we're calling our action items. So next slide. Yep, thanks. And that is, there are seven items that really are more directly in the control of the transit agencies and things that we know that we can tackle and take leadership on ourselves. Then we're still going to need the support of broader stakeholders across the region, but I think it's really important that we identify these, and we're going to begin working on these. Some of these things are sort of, aspects of these are already happening, but very diligent work beginning in 2023. None of them are easy to accomplish, but we think that they're steps that we can move forward and help advance for everybody. The list includes steps that are going to make the system safer, more secure, a very critical thing that we heard from region residents, to make paying for transit more seamless and simpler, more affordable, to accelerate our transition to a near-zero emission transit system, and also prioritizing communities burdened by poor air quality, adapting to changing needs of riders, among other things. So next slide. We will release the draft plan in early December for public comment, and it'll be considered by our board for adoption in early February. But we continue, we will be continuing engagement throughout both the plan adoption and even into implementation. I want to specifically note our December 7, public, virtual public hearing that we'll be hosting, inviting stakeholders who have helped us co-create this plan to be part of that, as well as members of the public to hear about the plan and give us feedback. We'll have RTA staff also from departments in breakout rooms to actually engage more deeply in conversation while providing and balancing the whole effort out to provide more of the traditional public inputs and hearing process. But we hope to make the overall effort more engaging, more interactive. We're sharing the information about that through our public media and social media posts. If you've got any social media networks, encourage you to share that data. We can provide you more information, more specifics, if you wish. We will follow the adoption of the plan and our budget in December with some immediate actions that'll include a region-wide public advocacy campaign focused on opportunities for a coalition that we feel we've built through this planning work, and to continue, have them continue to work with us as we advocate for the future of the transit system. I welcome any thoughts or input you have here today. We are joined by staff, and we will be in Room 300A after this meeting if anybody wanted in public as well, wanted to stop by and share any thoughts and input with us. But that ends my presentation. Happy to take any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much, Leanne. You've done a marvelous job leading the agency with your board and with your staff. This comes at a critical time. There's going to be a lot for this future board to consider. I know that there's agencies weighing in on this. CMAP 1, the legislature is contemplating a restructure to the governance and the funding for public transit. And so what does that mean? We're all going to be zealous advocates for DuPage County, I trust, so I'm looking forward to working or watching this board work with the RTA and the transit agencies. But thank you. Any questions for Leanne? Thank you very, oh, we do, yes.
Sure, I'll ask a couple of questions. Thank you so much for your presentation, appreciate it. When you say we're far too reliant on fares, where does, where do you see funding come from? The federal government?
So right now, the traditional way our region system has been funded has been sort of this, I call it kind of this three-part compact between fares, riders who are paying their fares to support the transit system, taxpayers who are supporting it through the broader region-wide sales tax that we have, and then the state, the state legislature, who provides funding and then a match to the sales tax. So I think the challenge for us going forward is we, we have a statutory right now, a statutory requirement of meeting, fair revenue meeting 50% of our operating costs, and that's really just not a practical or sustainable model. So you're right, working with the legislature to maybe change that obligation, but the money still has to come from somewhere. And we've got a lot more detail in our financial plan, and even more will be coming in the strategic plan, but there really is no one source that's going to sort of bail out a number that large, and we recognize that. The sales tax is as an option, we're being actually bolstered by the strong sales tax. I think the county is a beneficiary of some of this, too. Sales tax revenues have been coming in incredibly strong, so while sort of this balance of the federal relief monies and the sales tax are kind of keeping us afloat, and we're anticipating that the sales tax will remain strong, but when the federal relief monies run out, we have to fill that gap. And so recognizing that fare revenue is not going to come back even to that level, people are still riding, but they're not riding five days a week. And that's really, you know, even if you're not going downtown or riding the transit system, even just Monday and Friday, for example, that's a 20% cut in the fare revenue. So it presents a challenge, state revenues potentially expanding. The list of things that even the county kind of engages in some of these conversations, the federal government talking to them about maybe considering, because right now, the federal government, pre-COVID, didn't provide any operating funding for public transportation. They only provided money on the capital infrastructure side. So that's certainly a conversation, myself and our peers nationally, sort of talking about that, going to start advocating for that. These are long-term conversations that aren't going to be happening overnight, so I think it's going to be, I kind of think of it as the smallest board of options will be on the table and probably have to look at a collection of solutions.
Thank you. And, you know, a totally separate issue, and I don't know if the RTA deals with this, but your partner agencies certainly would, and this isn't about DuPage County, but I'm in the news business, and it seems like every weekend, we're talking about some random act of violence, particularly on the CTA. Is there a budgetary means to beef up security, especially during the overnight hours on the CTA?
So CTA's budget, and CTA was just, all three agencies were just before our board, just last week, yes, presenting the details of their budget. CTA has made significant investments this year and then continuing into next year, add even more funding to, for securities and services. They are also producing, they put out a plan, meet the moment that they released earlier this summer, and they're doing a monthly scorecard to sort of track where that, how they're doing against that. So they've done cameras, security guards, K-9 units, some examples of some of the things that they're doing. They don't actually have a police force, they're reliant on the City of Chicago Police Department, and I think it's not a secret that, you know, that's, they're struggling to actually just get police officers. So there's a lot of challenges. Safety and security was sort of one of the number-one issues that we heard in our focus groups and our conversations. It is critically important, we recognize it's a challenge. The challenge, though, the complexity of safety and security is really multifaceted, and it's, you know, and sometimes it's violence that's just happening on CTA or around CTA. There's also violence and assaults happening with Metro and Pace, you know, rider assault, driver assaults, and so it's a challenge for the entire region. We know we have to tackle it, but it is going to have to be multifaceted. It's, you know, it's public safety, it's labor getting involved, it's mental health, public health investments, it's that whole complexion of layering of all these different issues that we have to tackle this in a sort of a multifaceted way.
I appreciate your insight. Thank you.
And if I may, so this is a big issue that you guys are going to tackle, and I trust you're going to handle it very skillfully. The Fairbox Recovery, I mean, I remember when we adopted the RTA Act, Fairbox Recovery was a policy that was incorporated into the funding model to drive ridership, because everybody thought at the time that, you know, public transit is not going to be a successful mode or option if people aren't choosing to go there. And so, so if we're talking about subsidizing the system and there's not a lot of people riding it, most of the jobs are in the suburbs. was a policy that was incorporated into the funding model to drive ridership, because everybody thought at the time that, you know, public transit is not going to be a successful mode or option if people aren't choosing to go there. And so, so if we're talking about subsidizing a system and there's not a lot of people riding it, most of the jobs are in the suburbs, most of the job growth is out here. Our challenge has always been, and Mary Oza can probably tell you this, are how do we get people from Woodridge to the Fulfillment Center in Bowling Brook? You know, this is a system of public transit that is antiquated. It was built a long time ago, and it's a, it's a labor-delivery structure to bring labor from the suburbs into the city. And guess what? Most of the jobs are out here. So, it is going to be a tussle, and we're going to try to find common ground. But we on the DuPage County Board, all of you, will remain zealous advocates, try to do the right thing, recognizing the importance of Chicago, but really and truly recognizing what the suburbs have to offer for economic vitality in the region. And safety and security is a big part of it. You can't subsidize a system if people are afraid to get on that bus. CTA's got how many billions of dollars of debt? Billions?
Bill?
What is it up to now?
What does CTA have approximately?
Yeah. And they've done virtually, they do very little to cut costs. So, you guys got your hands full. Thank you very much, Leanne.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say personally, a thank you to you for your years of dedication and support for public transportation, both in the state legislature and now here at DuPage County. You have been a strong voice and advocate for us, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'd like to ask our friend Wes Beckton, our appointee to the Metro Board and a proud Elmhurst resident, member of the Elmhurst University Board of Trustees. And Wes is here to present Metro's annual report. Thanks for joining us, Wes. Please take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. Just in response to the last couple of questions, Metro does have its own police force. The incidents that happen on Metro are isolated. Last week, Chairman Cronin paid a visit to our operations center and was able to see the classified number of cameras that we've got that are monitoring what's happening across all lines in the Metro system. So, I'm here to say Metro is safe. Additionally, Metro does not have any debt. Let me say that again, Metro does not have any debt. It's an honor to be here. Leanne was able to cover so much of what Metro does that I will keep my comments brief. You all should have received a copy, both email and real mail, of the 2023 proposed budget and also the Metro's version of the strategic plan. A couple of highlights of the budget, we're not increasing fares. If you've seen the advertisements for the $100 monthly Super Saver Fare and the $10, $6 daily fare prices, we're not increasing those. The increases in the budget are all based on inflationary impacts such as medical fuel, insurance, and also some contractual agreements. The funds that we're using are designed to also help bring us back to pre-pandemic service levels, because what we're trying to do is effectively manage the capacity and the demand and do that in a fiscally responsible manner. What we're looking at in the budget for 2023 projects at the beginning of the, of the calendar year, a 40% return to pre-pandemic levels, increasing up to 55% at the end of the year. What we're experiencing, and this probably isn't news to you, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Thursdays were over 50% of pre-pandemic levels. Monday, not so much, Friday even less. And that's that hybrid work schedule that people are still trying to figure out. In terms of a capital budget, with different sources of uses of funds, many that Leanne mentioned, we're making an investment in railcars, locomotives, bridges, and stations, and we're actually going to make an investment in the first fully electric trains that'll be produced in the upcoming years. But that'll be a prototype that you'll start to see, but we believe that's part of us being environmentally conscious as well. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. But as a point of personal privilege, I would also like to say thank you to you for your support of the Metro Systems, our employees. And I would welcome any of you the opportunity to, to come down to Metro and take a tour. If you want to ride a train or drive a train, it's really cool. You ought to come out and do it. Just please let us know. We'd be happy to make that happen.
Don, you'd like that. You could honk the horn.
Yeah, pretty cool stuff.
Thanks, Wes. Anybody have any questions for Wes, Metro? Now, I want to commend you. Metro's done a marvelous job, and you're always the first ones to bite the bullet and raise fares, and no one else is raising fares, but, but you're doing the right thing. That's why you have a balanced budget and you have no debt. But it's a challenge. Public transit's a challenge. You have done a marvelous job. I want to commend. There's Dimitri. I've known Dimitri for about 30 years, and you've done a fine job over there as well. So, anything you need from this board, I'm sure they'll be there for you.
Yep. Thank you all for your service to DuPage County.
Okay, we have some recognitions that we'd like to make right now, and I, we begin today's meeting this week of Thanksgiving with a few recognitions and with gratitude. We offer our thanks to our departing board members who have served DuPage County with honor and diligence. And as we begin, I'll ask Vice Chair Ashley Selman, if you'd be kind enough to join me up here and help me with the presentations of the plaques, please. Plaques, we like plaques. It's a very important thing, plaques. Jim Zayb, you have a few plaques in life, don't you, all your accomplishments? So, the first one, the first plaque, the first recognition is yours, Ashley. I hereby recognize your service on this board as Vice Chair, Chair of Technology, and Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on the County Board Rules, to name just a few of your many contributions. I'm truly grateful, truly grateful for your even-handed approach to governance and outreach. You've done a marvelous job filling in for me here on the dais when necessary. Ashley, you've represented your district faithfully with enthusiasm, dedication, and honor. We will miss you. So, I have a plaque here. Where is that? Right there on top. Look at that. Okay, great. Now, Ashley, if you'll help me present this next award to your District 1 seatmate, Don Faczowski. Don, if you'll join us up here, please. There we go. It's my honor to present this plaque to you in recognition of your 17 years of service on the board. And you've been a leader in all matters transportation, especially on issues related to O'Hare Airport, whether it's Western Access, the airport noise, and runway configurations. You were immersed in all of that. We've looked to you for your wise counsel on the Ad-Hoc Committee and collective bargaining. We thank you for your leadership. Don, you are a great team player, and we're so grateful for your service to District 1 and to all the residents of DuPage County. Thank you, and God bless you. Next, we have Member Pete DeCiani. Would you join us at the podium, please? Member DeCiani, as we all know, is a strong advocate for the disabled community. He has served on the Stormwater Committee, which is an area of, the DeCiani family, please come join us, area of high interest for his district, the Stormwater Committee, and on the Technology Committee and on many other committees where his background in municipal government served him very well. Member DeCiani, please accept this plaque in honor of your service on the board. Member Julie Renahan, come on down. Would you please join us up here? Member Renahan began her tenure serving here as the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Adult Businesses. Remember that one? We were, we were trying to get rid of them. And she led us in developing new regulations for the, trying to get rid of them in a proper constitutional way, right, Sam? And she's helped to ensure the health and safety of our residents with her service as Chair of the Judicial and Public Safety Committee and the Health and Human Services Committee, among her other contributions and duties on the board. Member Renahan, please accept this plaque in honor of your service. Member Greg Hart, would you please join me up here? Join us up at the podium. Member Hart, yes, thank you. Joined the board in 2017 when now Senate Minority Leader John Curran left to join the General Assembly. Since then, your contribution to this board have been many. As co-chair of the HOPE Task Force, you've led with distinction, winning two National Association of Counties awards for helping people suffering with substance use disorder make their way back to employment and through the court system with a chance for recovery and a path to a better life. We thank you for your service on our county board committees and for your dedication to your district and to the residents of DuPage County. And I'm delighted to also wish you, Alex, Madeline, and George, and our heartiest congratulations on your new baby girl, who we expect to join your family this spring. You will be one busy dad. And finally, Amy Phillips. There she is, Amy Phillips. Come on down. Please join me. And we can't thank you enough for stepping in to serve the members of District 5 over the past several weeks. You hit the ground running and faithfully provided thoughtful representation to your constituents, and for that, we are truly grateful. It's been a pleasure getting to know you, and we know we will be seeing you around through your work at the Conservation Foundation, a marvelous organization. Please accept this recognition for your service on behalf of the board. And, and please, let's take a picture. And now, I'm advised that Ashley, you would like to share a few thoughts. So, I'm going to step aside for Ashley, the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point in the county board meeting, we typically present proclamations and praise of community service members. We thought, however, in celebration of this being your last meeting, in honor of your exemplary 32 years of public service, we would like to offer a proclamation on your behalf. Now, by way of disclaimer, this isn't an exhaustive list, one because it doesn't fit on one page, and I didn't really want to read that much. So, consider this your DuPage County Highlights reel. Whereas Daniel J. Cronin was first elected DuPage County Board Chairman in 2010 and won reelection in 2014 and 2018, making tremendous strides to change the culture of government; and whereas Chairman Cronin worked to reduce the footprint and cost of local government through the formation of the Accountability, Consolidation, and Transparency Act Initiative, which led to the dissolution of seven county-appointed agencies and the creation of cooperative agreements with other units of government; and whereas Chairman Cronin took a fiscally responsible approach to governing, reducing the sales tax by a quarter cent, finding efficiencies and cutting waste to keep property taxes low for our residents, saving hundreds of millions of dollars; and whereas Chairman Cronin strengthened the relationship with DuPage municipalities advocating for increased economic development opportunities for our communities throughout, through the many initiatives, including the establishment of Choose DuPage and the construction of Western Access to the O'Hare Airport; and whereas Chairman Cronin joined leaders from the City of Chicago and Cook County to form the Chicagoland Regional Economic Partnership, an entity designed to focus on regional economic development, collaboration, cooperation, and enhancement in our region; and whereas Chairman Cronin embraced the county's diversity, adopting strategic initiatives focused on diversity and inclusion efforts, including increasing the number of women and minorities serving on county-appointed agencies; and whereas Chairman Cronin fought for the health and safety of residents, forming the Heroin Opioide Preservation and Education HOPE Task Force to help people suffering from substance abuse disorders, creating the state's first countywide Narcan program for first responders and an RX Box disposal program; and whereas Chairman Cronin led the county through the COVID-19 pandemic, working to obtain the county's fair share of vaccines, and working with national, state, and local stakeholders to ensure the health and safety of all county residents; and whereas Chairman Cronin ends his 12-year tenure as county board chairman with an incredible, incredible record of accomplishments, leaving a legacy of exemplary governance and fiscal responsibility. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Ashley Selman, Vice Chairwoman of the DuPage County Board and members of the county board, do hereby thank Chairman Dan Cronin for his service to DuPage County and wish him the best in his next chapter of life. Approve this 22nd day of November. Can I get a motion? And second, all in favor? Motion passes. All right, so now, as I understand it, Chief Administrative Officer Nick Kotmeyer is going to come up, and he has some things to present to you on behalf of senior staff and the department heads.
So, thank you. On behalf of senior staff, we wanted to, to show our appreciation for your years of guidance, leadership, and friendship all these years. And so, the one thing we did, Mrs. Cronin gave us one guidance is no more plaques. So, that was the one thing that we did. But this is from all the senior staff, and we wanted to give you something that you could use, you could enjoy, remember the county, remember us. So, I'm going to do a Santa Claus thing first. Here's gift number one. So, you can just tear it open. It'll be easy. I guarantee it's, it's okay to. So, so for now that you're going to have hopefully much more time for some golf, that will, it has the county emblem on it, and hopefully you can wear that.
Very nice, very nice.
Not a plaque, not a plaque. Here's gift number two from senior staff. And a little bit bigger, but along the same line for those cold fall games that you're watching your son at Dartmouth play, play football. This one should be, should help you with that as well.
Oh, this is awesome. Oh, we're proud. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And just so, also, before I forget, Cheryl, is it 3500A or B?
B. After county board and 3500B, there will be cookies and coffee and punch for everybody, you know, you know, board members, for staff to come by, especially all the departing, departing county board members, and also to the entire board. A lot of turnover this time, and I will say it's been a pleasure from senior staff working for each and every one of you, and we're going to miss you. It's been a pleasure. So, thank you, and please join us afterwards. Senior staff will be up there, staff, public's welcome, anybody's welcome.
So, I'm going to deliver my chairman's remarks from down here, because my mother wants to say something, and I'm a little concerned about that, but, but. So, in any event, in the order of chairman's remarks, first... But so, in any event, in the order of chairman's remarks, first, I would like to introduce some special guests. My lovely wife Julie is here, my daughter Elizabeth, my brother Brian, and my 95-year-old mother Claire Cronin, who is just as concerned about the community and committed to the betterment of DuPage County as she was 95 years ago. So and my sister Cindy is here, Cindy, who will be joining the ranks of this august body very soon. Thank you, welcome Cindy. And I just wanted to thank all of you for this kind recognition of my service. Thirty-two years really goes by in a flash. As I reflect on the accomplishments that we achieved on behalf of taxpayers, I recall a quote that I like to repeat. There are two types of people who will tell you that you cannot make a difference in this world, and those who are afraid to try and those who are afraid that you will succeed, as strange as that sounds, I think. It's so true. In DuPage County, we have succeeded beyond my wildest dreams, and it's all because of a good team effort. We've balanced every budget, we've kept property taxes low, making wise, prudent investments. DuPage County is in the strongest financial shape it has been in a long time. We've embodied the spirit of accountability, efficiency, positive and innovative service delivery. Your proclamation has named some of our achievements, but there are so many others, each incredibly significant that we accomplished together. I feel confident our staff will help the new Board and the new Chair to continue to lead the state by example. DuPage County has always been a leader in good government, and I trust and expect it will continue to be. I hope those elected will be wise and fearless as they seek to move our county into its next chapter of excellence, always mindful of the virtues of collaboration and cooperation and finding that path forward together. I would like to thank my colleagues on the Board, past and present, and countywide elected officials for contributing in important and lasting ways to our county. I want to thank my family, my mother Claire, my brothers and sisters, particularly my brother Brian who's here today. Those of us elected to public office, they we know, we know the enormous debt of gratitude we owe our spouses and our families, those who support us most deeply and passionately through this unpredictable wild ride. Thank you to my partner in life, my wife Julie, my four children, Elizabeth, Sarah, Grace, and Danny, who have eaten more than their share of corned beef and cabbage and marched in countless parades over the years with me. My professional accomplishments pale in comparison to my role as a husband and a dad. I promise, really and truly, dear, I will put the phone down now.
Turn it off at night.
And I'll spend this next chapter with you. So finally, I thank the residents of DuPage County for electing me to serve as your DuPage County Board Chairman. It's been an honor and a privilege. Thank you all. Got through that pretty well, huh? Not too bad? Okay. We move on to the next order of business entitled Public Comments. According to our Board rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the Board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, and all of the remarks shall not exceed 30 minutes. Our first speaker, we have a few folks in person here, Jay Belsetti, I'm sorry, from Herrick Lake Equestrian, from Warrenville. Jay, you want to offer some remarks here? Record of attendance only, forgive me, record of attendance only. And it doesn't say what his position is on it, only that he's interested in this issue. Oh, he's for it. He's for the Herrick Lake Equestrian Plan. Who couldn't be for an equestrian plan, right, Elizabeth? Bill Jordan from Herrick Lake Equestrians, he's also for the proposal that we're on the agenda today. Gabrielle Nelson, she's here from Naperville, speaking out in support of the Herrick Lake Equestrians. Chuck Freund, Freund, F-R-E-U-N-D-P, Freund, Steeple Run Elementary Zoning, he's here to offer some testimony. Chuck, are you here? Yes, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. My name is Chuck Freund, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools in Naperville Community Unit School District 203. I'm here on behalf of our students, our staff, and the Steeple Run community on an issue before you later under development in the agenda. I'd like to start my comments by thanking the Development Committee last week, who also heard from our architect and their unanimous support of our project to add an addition and additional parking to our elementary school Steeple Run. Steeple Run is a proud school and a proud community. Our students that attend there are there because most of our families have identified that specific school, that community to live in and send their children to. Our staff have gone above and beyond the call of duty. We're very proud of the work they do and all they do to support our students there. Despite their efforts, it is a school that has limited space. We have classrooms that are doubled up, lessons in hallways, fine arts classes that are occurring in places that are non-traditional, if you will. And over the last several years, we have done all that we can internally to make adjustments to try our best to keep class sizes small and also spaces appropriate for our students. Simply put, the school community is doing so much good without the resources that we know that they deserve. Engaging with our architect about a year ago, we developed a plan that's before you for a vote this morning. That plan, we are confident, will do just what we're setting out to do, and that is to create balanced class sizes, to provide classrooms that are designed specifically for our youngest learners, to provide collaboration space that's much needed for our specialists and our staff, as well as additional parking for the staff that has increased due to enrollment increases, and an added drop-off lane for our families during drop-off and dismissal to make sure that we are lessening the traffic around that school that's already in existence. Just want to finally thank the Board for the consideration, Chairman for all of your service, and I'd wish each of you happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Jean Davis.
Good morning, Board members. I'm Carol Jean Davis from Downers Grove District 2, and during this season of Thanksgiving, I want to ask you to support FIR 0486622, a resolution for a grant agreement with DuPage Pads in the amount of $250,000. ARPA funds were made available from the federal government to help all people. No one is more in need than the homeless in DuPage County. I've been a volunteer and a financial supporter with Pads for several years. Folks, winter is here, and I have seen the need firsthand. The need is real. Please help us provide those with the most need the ability to get through winter in northern Illinois. A recent article that ran in two local papers details how this money would be spent. There is logical plan in place to use the money wisely. Additionally, I would like to add that providing these funds would also take some strain off of other local institutions like libraries and local police. People would have a place to use their own bathroom, shower, sleep, and eat with dignity and safety. I also encourage those of you that can to set up a monthly recurring contribution to DuPage Pads so that we don't have to scramble and beg for funding. Our county is better than that. DuPage can end homelessness, of that I am sure. We all just need to do our part where and when we can. Today, as County Board members, your opportunity awaits. Please approve the funds. Thank you for your time, and warmest and sincere wishes for a happy and fulfilling Thanksgiving.
Mark Daniel.
Mark Daniel, on behalf of Bill Jordan, who is the beneficiary of a trust, Item 11C is an item I'm asking you to vote in support of. Mr. Jordan was a co-beneficiary with an individual sitting a couple rows in front of him behind me here. He was a veterinarian, and in 1998 and 1999, Mr. Jordan and that veterinarian developed stables, turnout areas, an indoor arena on land that is before you on Item 11C. That veterinarian viewed that use and the design for the use, 18 stalls, turnout areas along Butterfield Road and the arena, as safe and appropriate for the operation of the stables. Those stables have operated since then without incident, no fire, no issues with manure. They haul it off-site all the time, even though some try to cast aspersions of the contrary and ask, what about the urine? How are you going to get that off-site? Why do we ask that question? Because we're digging to find a way to deny a use that has benefited families, adults, seniors, children, including kids with disabilities. And you're looking at a use today on 11C that deserves a place in DuPage County. It should remain at this site. Do not think that the site is too small for 18 horses based upon the residential standards for acreage per horse. Staff, the state's Attorney's Office, myself, we all are on the same page on that. Those ratios do not apply to a stable operation like this. There's no home on the site. Some will say there's not enough space, nine turnout areas. Some stables have direct access outside. Four miles of trails that are connected at two points to the property, one of which is a National Historic Trail, and the other of which was created by the DuPage County Forest Preserve. 2,500 acres, square acres, I mean, acres are square, 2,500 acres of land for horse riding. I have to ask you, if the conditional uses without any variations are not appropriate here, where in DuPage County are they appropriate? This land is surrounded by forest preserve with one exception, the veterinarian who lives next door, owns the property next door, who helped develop the operation that we're asking you to approve today. In 30 years of practice before the county, I've not seen the county in the business of restricting opportunity to engage in a lawful use when it comes to what its residents enjoy. We had seniors, families, kids at the zoning hearing. This is an active use. For those of you who are voting against this, and I know there are a couple, ask yourself, when are you going to take that step to improve opportunity when this particular use in DuPage County is disappearing everywhere you look? You approved a soccer facility just a little while back. That took out 36 stables. One on St. Charles has disappeared. This is an existing use that the primary objector helped develop. It should have your blessing. I would like to move on. I want to thank those of you who've been here. And give me a couple extra seconds here, but Chairman Cronin, and I see your mom left, but I want to thank you. I want to thank you. You've been a model of service, not just because of your strong leadership, but because in Elmhurst, there are a few folks, when I look around this room, I see you and I see others that are active in the community. You're part of the fabric. You're not just on the County Board and leading. You are part of the community. And I look to others, former mayors that have been on the County Board, I see folks that have been around for a long time on the eastern side of the county, and that's the kind of leadership that really is a model. People should know you as much as they know you're on the County Board doing what you're doing. And I appreciate the service that you've given. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark. Next, we have Joe Abel. Joe used to be work for the county long, just a couple of years ago, right?
Sometime ago.
You're an expert.
Well, I won't say too much. You were the swim coach for both of my daughters.
That goes way, way back.
Anyway, my name is Joseph Abel. I'm a planning and zoning consultant. I have over 50 years of experience. Experience has been all over the Chicago metropolitan area, but the best experience I had was the 17 years as Director of Planning and Zoning for DuPage County and also Secretary to the Zoning Board of Appeals during that timeframe. I had the opportunity to prepare the first comprehensive land use plan for the county. It was designed in conjunction with all the municipalities and got their approval, and that was a tough job. And so that was probably the highlight of my career in terms of really accomplishing something that someone said could not be done. In terms of why I'm here today, obviously, my familiarity with the property, which goes back over 50 years, the fact that I was the owner of three hunter jumper horses, worked for many, many years with my granddaughter to perfect her skills, so I know the operation. We kept our horse. If I'd known about this facility, I certainly would have been here at some time, but we were at a stable in South Naperville, and so I'm totally familiar on what it takes to operate and develop riding skills. The important issues here, and Mark has gone through most of them, is the fact that this property has always been used. There is no change in the plan that you see, other than we've updated the landscape plan. Other than that, the use is identical. How this created, and this is the thing that's so important, there's the property of the objector to the west is two and a half acres, and the subject property is two and a half acres. All of the development has always been on the two and a half acres. When it got separated, there was no change in use. The objecting neighbor to the west still has his two and a half acres, and all of the development that we're asking for approval today is on the eastern two and a half. They had put it together as a use to create the agricultural exemption, and that's how they got started. But now it is separated, and this is a two and a half acre parcel. In developing the first comprehensive amendment to the zoning ordinance, we established, and most of what's in that ordinance today is what I and my staff developed, there is no doubt in my mind, and that's why this is a conditional use with no variations, this is a permitted use in this district. Conditional uses are permitted uses, it's just that because they have unique operating opportunities, you have to look at it carefully, and you can add conditions. We added conditions, and they're all listed in the ordinance. They're to guarantee that this property will have no adverse impact on surrounding properties. So it fits in with the comprehensive plan. We worked very closely with the Forest Reserve District. This entire area was set up for this type of use. The Forest Reserve actually provides a path. We have an opening at the south end of the property that goes right into 2,400 acres of open space, and then we have a national trail in front. This is a unique opportunity to have an equestrian facility within DuPage County that meets the goals and policies and the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Roth from Ice Miller on the same development.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. And a warm good morning to the Cronin family, particularly Mrs. Cronin. So good to see you. They're everywhere. My name is Michael Roth. I'm an attorney, and I represent the owner of the property immediately next door to the petitioner's property on the Herrick Equestrian matter. My client's property is zoned residential, the petitioner's property is zoned residential. My client has lived on his property for 30 years. There is no house. There is no house on the petitioner's property. Rather, the petitioner's property is improved with a large garage to house his equipment for his construction company, and there's another building there that's a stable for his five horses. My client's property is about 15, the front door to my client's property on his house is about 15 steps to the property line, and it's about another 15 steps beyond that to the corral for the petitioner's property. But the petitioner has five horses. My client has never complained about having the five horses there. He's entitled to it. But when the petitioner and Mr. Abel step up and say that there's no change in the use, I ask then, what are they doing here? Why are they here? The reason is because they want to increase the number of horses they're going to house on their property to have a commercial riding stable for more than triple the number of horses that he has, 18. I want to be clear, because the record was not clear from the prior commission committee meetings. This is not a continuation of an existing use. The petitioner has not had 18 horses there continuously. He's had five, and now he wants to more than triple that number. It's totally inappropriate for these land, these properties, and it is completely inconsistent with your own county zoning regulations. I would respectfully ask that you deny the petition. Thank you.
Steve Borowiak.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I thank you. I am Steve Borowiak, a veterinarian who has lived in the three-acre parcel home adjacent to the property for 31 years. I speak on behalf of the Borowiak family. Your vote today will change the rules for every horse owner in DuPage County, down to the person who has a one-acre parcel and keeps backyard horse in a garden shed. Let's approach this from a practical sense. I have not had any contact with the petitioner for 20 years. He purchased the property knowing that he could have only five horses. 20 years ago, he accepted the restrictions because it served as an office for his construction business. In those 20 years, five horses have been on the property and generated a positive monthly cash flow, and the buildings are fully depreciated. In 20 years, he's never paid more than $4,000 in taxes. Let's look at what my family and neighbors get in the next 20 years. This business is asking to expand to a commercial business open to the public. This business has live animals, therefore it's open seven days a week, seven to nine. Highest use is early morning, after school, nights, weekends, and holidays. This is the exact timeframe for the use of the Illinois Prairie Path, the high school traffic, turning onto Madison from Butterfield. On an average day, they would have two workers arriving before 7:00 a.m. for their customers. No one lives on the property, therefore every employee, trainer, student, food, garbage, order has to arrive down the driveway next to my house. That would be 40 trips a day during the exact times when homeowners want to enjoy their family homes. In the event of a power outage or a storm, this would leave these horses without heat and water because the site has well and septic. Allowing 18 horses, five horses, which the county zoning stipulations regulate, on a three-acre site would allow every DuPage resident, including myself and Connie Schmidt, to declare ourselves as stables with a conditional use, ignoring the current zoning recommendations. If this was such an injustice, why wasn't it petitioned for 20 years ago? If the evidence was so overwhelming, it should have surfaced 20 years ago. I ask each of you to take a moment when you get home tonight to step out of your car and look around and smell and listen. And do you want to live next to this business? I oppose the petition. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you directly. Full disclosure, I managed that business from 1998 to 2000. It has allowed me intimate knowledge of the business model that's proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Michael Lack. Michael Lack.
Thank you. I am speaking about the Herick Lake Equestrian. I am opposed to this. My name is Michael Lack. I'm a resident of Wheaton. Some of you board members are familiar with me and the engineering firm I founded over third and own for 36 years. The firm was Ballinger, Lack, and Associates, now called B.L.A., and was an Illinois registered professional design firm. I am retired from the firm now, but during my career with the firm, it provided civil and structural engineering, transportation, stormwater, public utility, surveying, and environmental services for over 25 years to DuPage County, as well as many other public and private clients. I held an Illinois registered professional engineering license for 40 years, and I offer this brief background only because I want you to understand my reasons for opposing this matter. I have followed the committee meeting presentations with Dr. Borowiak and have observed that petitioner's materials have not addressed a number of issues that negatively affect this property. Briefly, some of those are summarized. The 19-stall parking lot has no provisions for mitigating environmental contamination on the subject property, as well as the objecting property's well and forest preserve. The only usable turnout area for the 18 horses is towards the front of the site, which is essentially turns into an open space, urine and fecal matter latrine, and is located directly across from doctor's residence and a screen porch. Three and a half times more proposed animal waste than is currently permitted. Drainage flows from east to west and to a swale adjoining the property line, which causes damage and instability and falling over of the associated landscaping and evergreens. The large main two buildings, a 19-space parking lot, driveway, septic field, and well occupy the majority of the 2.9-acre site. The available horse paddock is approximately 30,000 square feet or .7 acres, or 24% of the site for outside activities for 18 horses. Even though I'm retired, but given my professional career experience, I can observe that proper attention to these obvious and practical issues has not been addressed. In the record, there has not been one fact, analysis, study, or testimony from a licensed engineer, surveyor, drainage, or environmental professional to address stormwater, best management practices, water quality, traffic, et cetera, to support this matter. I do oppose this and hope that my points help you making your no-vote decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, thank you, sir. Sumaya Galstanee, about the Herick Lake, from Warrenville. Forgive me, I hope I didn't.
My name is Sumaya Galstanee. I live directly across the street from the petitioner, and I oppose this adamantly. I looked at the DuPage zoning, and there is a point in there that's an ordinance that basically says it's one horse to 10,000 square feet. I'm not great on the verbiage part, but I'm totally a numbers person. So I did the calculations for it, and the zoning does agree that it's five horses. If we go to 18 horses, or even to 20 horses, then we are destroying the idea of continuous space, or contiguous spaces, as the zoning ordinance does say. So I do oppose this. It's not practical for the animals. We've seen a lot of accidents on Butterfield Road. That driveway is very small. There's a lot of students that are driving on Butterfield Road to get to the high school, and I think this opens up a can of worms that you can't close afterwards. So I'm really asking practicality. Does it make sense to have 18 horses on 2.9 acres? It's not logical. The ordinance actually says it's one horse per 10,000 square feet. I'm asking you to think about the humanity also of the horses. Is this a humane act or not? And please oppose this. It's not right for the animals either. Thank you.
Connie Schmidt.
Good morning. I'm here to speak opposing the Herick Lake stable. That seems odd, because I am a horse owner here in DuPage County for almost 40 years. My husband and I have managed our property, and we have boarded horses on our property during all of that time. There were times when it would have been more profitable for us to have more horses there. However, that would have been an invasive and negative impact to our neighbors and a drain on the environment and the land itself. More horses means more manure, more traffic, both trucks to deliver supplies and to remove the manure. At least, we hope they're going to be removing the manure, and a lot more visitors to the location. We don't feel it's suitable. This property has a very unfortunate history, but that does not mean that a new or current owner should impact the immediate neighbor in the surrounding area. Everyone said five stalls, too many stalls. But also, something that's been brought up, there's no one living on the property that would care for the inevitable emergency that happens when you have horses, health emergency, accident emergency. So I did just a quick little bit of research on the regulations for DuPage County, what you all, you know, the purposes that thankfully you watch over. One, to provide harmonious relationships in the interaction between man and animal. Protect animals from improper use, abuse, neglect, inhumane treatment, and health hazards. Provide security to residents from annoyance, intimidation, and injury from dogs and other animals. Encourage responsible pet ownership. Provide for assessment of penalties for violations and for enforcement and administration of this article. Agreeing to the petitioner's request would violate those established regulations of DuPage County and negatively impact the community. Unfortunately, and I'm sorry, because I love horses and I'd love to see more, but it's inappropriate in this location. Thank you.
Okay. And lastly, for in-person public comment, Chris Nicholson from Elmhurst.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Chris Nicholson. I live in Elmhurst. I am a boarder at Herick Lake Equestrian. I've boarded a number of different places in DuPage County. A couple of years ago, at Medina, which went away. It's sad to see stall space going away in DuPage County, considering the numbers of trails and the experience of horses in this county. And to take away stall space for horses is incredibly sad. I still talk to a couple of the folks at Medina that are desperately still looking for stall space within the county and are forced to go further west, and some of their horses are elderly and can't leave a stall even, and they can't find a space that would accommodate for it. Our barn is great. It's clean. The horses have run out space. They're, they don't forage. We feed the horses, and there's someone there morning, noon, night. There are cameras. We can watch the horses, you know, at 2:00 a.m. if we choose to. So they're properly cared for and watched. The place is clean. The manure is taken away consistently. I love the place. I love my horse. I'm not going to put it in danger or cause it any harm. There's certainly plenty of opportunity to move elsewhere. I really like Herick Lake. We're attached to, as you all know, thousands of acres of trail riding, and it would be sad to see us losing that opportunity for other horse riders in DuPage. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Chad, advise me, we have a couple of online commentators, or no, Evan, forgive me. So we have a couple of folks online. The rules still apply online? I don't know how long we've been at this. How long have we been doing this?
Good morning. First comment is from Dan Jesky. Subject is zoning-22-54 Stout. Comment reads, "I was raised at Zero South 434 River Glen Road with a family devoted to the best possible care for a myriad of animals, including but not limited to horses and other large animals. Our ability to care for these animals stemmed from the love of animals, but also the appropriate acreage to best support them. I am strongly against rezoning any property to where larger animals cannot be in the proper environment to live a quality life." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Elena Ryan. Subject is hazmat proposed site. Comment reads, "Please do not allow them hazmat storage facility to be placed unincorporated Glenellen. This is too close to the residents' homes and dangerous for all of us. Storing hazardous materials near residential homes and proposed schools is not acceptable. We need, we don't need a stereogenic-type situation in our suburb. Protect our suburbs. Stand up. We do not need cancer-causing materials by our students and residences. If our village officials and representatives cannot stand up against this, what can they stand up against? Do not allow this company here. We will regret it with our health." That is the end of that comment. Last comment is from Edgar Powell. The subject is departing board members. Comment reads, "I would like to congratulate all of the departing board members of the county board for their service to our community. Member Selman has been an effective vice chair for the past two years, and I have admired her leadership over a wide variety of issues affecting county residents, including her efforts to reform the county board rules and expand opportunities for public participation during the COVID-19 pandemic. I am proud to have witnessed her career in public service ever since she started her campaign in Elmhurst. I have also appreciated Member Hart's work over the past several years, including as a vocal member of the ad hoc rules committee and as vice chair of the technology committee. Member Hart has consistently demonstrated his willingness to listen to constituent feedback, even when we may disagree. Member Renahan helped sponsor a proclamation recognizing every October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which I appreciate personally as the son and nephew of numerous breast cancer survivors. Member Renahan has also been a great advocate for constituents needing access to legal services and other community services. Lastly, I appreciate that Member Pachowski was willing to listen about technology services and the county's communications while he was a resident in District 1, and I also appreciate his responses to my inquiries about the collective bargaining process. Of course, there are many more elected officials who are departing this month, and I'm sure that everyone in the community extends our warmest of gratitudes to all of you for your service." That is the end of that comment. That is the end of submitted public comment.
Okay. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Then a motion and a second, and I will read the items into the record. Thank you, Edgar Powell, for that change in our approach. Full disclosure, it's very good to know all of this. 7A, DuPage County Board, regular meeting, Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. 7B, Payment of Claims, 1102 2022 Auto Debit Pay List. 7C, Payment of Claims, 1104 2022 Pay List. 7D, Payment of Claims, 1108 2022 Pay List. 7E, Payment of Claims, 1115 2022 Pay List. 7F, Wire Transfers, 1104 2022 Wire Transfers. 7G, Payment of Claims, 1115 2022 Wire Transfer. 7H, Consent Item, Change Orders to Various Contracts as Specified in the Attached Packet. 7I, Consent Item, Recorder Revenue Report, October 2022. And 7J, Consent Item, Monthly Receipt and Disbursement Report for the Month of October 2022. Then a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member DiCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
And Member Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. On to the Order of County Board. Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 487-22, a resolution naming interim committee assignments.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DiCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask Member DiCiani to please present item B.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ashley Selman and Chairman Cronin. Before I introduce this resolution, we've gotten a lot of things done here at the county board. We've gotten Medicaid passed for kids with autism. It came out of our legislative committee. Chairwoman Desart was probably sponsoring that, and you voted on that as a board. We got EpiPens put on police officers for the antilegume law that we authored here, right here in DuPage County, in addition to being the first county to have Narcan. We're the first county to have epinephrine on our police officers, and I think we're all proud of that. We've done a lot of things together, and, you know, we are legislators, and I really want to let, you know, the new board realize how powerful these positions are and yet how humble it is to be a county commissioner and county board member. And my last act as county board member is to introduce legislation to our And my last act as county board member is to introduce legislation to our federal partners, as we have done in the past, calling out the injustice of discriminating against kids with autism. You know, all 50 states have passed laws mandating insurance protection for autism. And back in 2008, at the very beginning, there were only two states, Texas and Indiana, and Illinois. Along with your leadership, there are many leaders like Jimmy Delio, Skip Saviano, Karen May, over 133 bipartisan sponsors came together and passed the most comprehensive law ensuring autism known as, named after a young lady sitting next to me. And it's with that spirit and passion that my last legislative agenda item is to pass Brianna's Law at the federal level and ensure the nearly 1 to 2 million kids that are covered by ERISA plans that are not covered because there's no federal mandate, that Republicans and Democrats could finally come together and do the right thing, as we have done here at the county board, and come together and pass these initiatives. So with that, I move on CBR 0490-22, excuse me, 0498, CBRE, CBR 048922, Resolution Support of the Federal Mandate to Ensure Healthcare Coverage for Children with Autism. Thank you.
And a motion and a second. Of course, for leave, leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Member DiCiani. I move on CBR 490-22, a resolution, the 2023 county board meeting schedule.
Leave, oh, question, Member Schwartzy.
I apologize, I should have asked.
Microphone.
I apologize, I should have asked this question before today's meeting, but the November schedule for next year's meetings are on the 1st and 3rd Tuesday, and I was just wondering if there was a reason for that. They're listed as November 7th and November 21st, which is the 1st and 3rd.
I don't think I'll be here.
And Thanksgiving is on the 23rd, if that matters.
I'm sure if you want to change it, there's plenty of time to entertain a revision to it. There's supposed to be some input on this.
Mr. Chairman, it would be advised to make an amendment on the floor for the 14th and the 28th.
Yeah, okay, you want to change it? There you go.
Sure.
Member Schwartzy moves that we move it from the 1st and 3rd to the 2nd and 4th. Any objection? Seeing none, hearing none, we now move to adopt it to the resolution. There's been a motion, seconded by Member Ozog. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, the ayes have it, the resolution now is before you, as amended. We have a motion and a second, and a request for leave. Leave is granted. Very nice, Mr. Schwartzy.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Selman, yeah.
Yep, and then last one, item D, an amendment to CBO 26A-22, Amendment to Adopting Lottery Results and Member Lottery Procedures.
We have a question from Mr. Krajewski.
Just a question, it says that on April 26th, we adopted, or we conducted the drawing, and then it's got the districts blank in the ordinance, it's group E, B, C.
Oh, Mr. McCarthy.
That was amended on the floor, those must have been omitted unintentionally, so, but the key point is that we're amending the deadline, so that you can do your lottery at your first meeting in December due to availability issues.
So, but we have the numbers of which districts A, which districts are B, which are C?
Yes, we do.
Okay, maybe you send them to me, I, but they were blank in here.
Will there be an inspection of the numbers that are in the container?
I'm sure the procedures provide for that.
Will board members be invited to observe, will there be observers there from like international countries or anything?
I don't believe the U.N. has requested to send observers.
All right, just wondering. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to adopt this amendment about the lottery for the members' districts. Motion second, request for leave, leave is granted. Thank you, Ashley, a wonderful report. On to the Order of Finance, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 047322, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the amount at $83,040.
With a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DiCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
And Member Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 047522, Acceptance and Appropriation of Additional Funding for the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, the amount of $150,000.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 047722, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, HHS Grant, in the amount of $1,748,193.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 048322, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Comprehensive Law Enforcement Response to Drugs Grant, Intergovernmental Agreement, in the amount of $150,000.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 048422, Budget Transfers from 1122 from various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 048522, Authorization of Contract with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 31.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR 046822, Resolution Approving a Grant with DuPage Pads for the Use of ARPA Fund, the amount of $250,000.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 048822, Additional Appropriation for the Tort Liability Fund, on the amount of $2 million.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIP 032922, Recommendation for the Issuance of the Contract Purchase Order to the Alliant Insurance Services to Secure Cyber Liability Insurance for the County. This contract covers December 1st, 2022 to December 1st, 2023, for finance tort liability for a contract not to exceed $176,078.
Leave is granted, thank you, Member Chaplin. On to the FY 2022 Budget Resolutions and Ordinances, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIO 005722, DuPage County 2022 Tax Levis for the Fiscal Year 2023.
Motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DiCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
And Member Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIO 005822, Ordinance, DuPage County, County of DuPage, Century Hill Lighting Fund, 2022 Tax Levy for Fiscal Year 2023.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIO 005922, Ordinance, Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the County of DuPage, State of Illinois, for the fiscal period beginning December 1st, 2022, and ending November 30th, 2023. Oh, no, I have to make an amendment on this, so I can have a second, and then I need to amend it.
So you're seeking to?
I'm seeking to amend.
Okay, so, yeah, she's moving to amend, there's a second, all those in favor say aye, those nay, the ayes have it, the ordinance is amended, there's a motion?
Yes, to amend, to include $252,000 for the Circuit Court Clerk to replace citation system, and $250,000 for DuPage Pads Emergency Housing.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there leave? Can we do leave? Yeah, right, so, yeah, as amended, so, yeah, there's a motion and a second, request for leave, leave is granted. Member Chaplin, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I move approval of FIR, FIO 006022, Ordinance, Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Police Records Management Systems Operation Fund of the County of DuPage, State of Illinois, for the fiscal period beginning December 1st, 2022, and ending November 30th, 2023.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 045022, Resolution, Authorization to Transfer Funds to the taxable general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source, recovery zone, economic development bonds, and Build America Bonds Series 2010A and 2010B, debt service fund company 7,000, for fiscal year 2023, in the amount of $7,994,551, and abate the 2022 tax levy for the taxable general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, recovery zone, economic development bonds, and Build America Bonds Series 2010A and 2010B.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 043722, Resolution, Abatement of the 2022 Tax Levy for the General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Alternative Revenue Source Series 2015B, company 7,000, accounting unit 7017, in the amount of $1,467,856.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 043822, Resolution, Appropriation for the Limited Tax General Obligation Refunding Bond Series 2016, Debt Service Fund Company 7,000, accounting unit 7018, for fiscal year 2023, in the amount of $3,619,875.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 043922, Resolution, Appropriation for the General Obligation Debt Certificate Series 2017, Debt Service Fund Company 7,000, accounting unit 7020, for fiscal year 2023, $688,891. I move approval of FIR 044022, Resolution, Appropriation of the General Obligation Limited Tax Certificates of Indebtedness Series 2009, Debt Service Fund Company 7,000, accounting unit 722, fiscal year 2023, $147,188.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 044122, Resolution, Appropriation for the Special Service Area Number 35, Lakes of Royce Renaissance, Unlimited Ad for Lamp Florium Tax Bond Series 2021, Debt Service Fund Company 7,100, accounting unit 7,500, for fiscal year 2023, in the amount of $328,471.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 044222, Resolution, Appropriation for the Special Service Area Number 37, York Center, IEP-A, IEP-A Loan Debt Service Fund Company 7,100, accounting unit 7,502, for fiscal year 2023, $95,000.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 044322, Resolution, Authorization to Transfer Funds from the General Fund to the Tort Liability Fund for the fiscal year 2023, up to but not to exceed $1,100,000.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 044422, Resolution, Authorization to Transfer Funds from the General Fund to the Building and Zoning Fund for fiscal year 2023, up to but not to exceed $467,500.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 044522, Resolution, Authorization to Transfer Funds from the General Fund to the DuPage Care Center Fund for fiscal year 2023, up to but not to exceed
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 044622, Resolution, Authorization to Transfer Funds from the General Fund to the Stormwater Management Fund for fiscal year 2023, up to but not to exceed $3,884,000.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 044722, Resolution, Authorization to Transfer Funds from the General Fund to the County Infrastructure Fund for fiscal year 2023, up to but not to exceed $6,620,406.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 044822, Resolution, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2023 Headcount.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 046622, Resolution, Compensation Structure Wage Adjustment Guidelines.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, and I'm going to be leaving the room for 19 and 20, and Member Krajewski will take those?
So, I'll let the record reflect that Member Chaplin is leaving the boardroom for items 19 and 20, and who did she hand, Mr. Krajewski, there you go.
Thank you, Chairman, I move on FIO 0061-22, Ordinance for 2022 Tax Levis for the Board of Health Operations, Board of Health Municipal Retirement, and Board of Health Social Security for Fiscal Year 2023.
Well, we can't do that, yeah, yeah. Remember Tim Elliott tried that, he tried to convince us that we could do that. Maybe he was right, I don't know, but, there's been a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin, member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DiCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
And Member Hart.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, Member Krajewski.
Thank you, Chairman, I move on FIO 0062-22, Ordinance for the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Board of Health Operations, Board of Health Municipal Retirement, and Board of Health Social Security Fund of the County of DuPage, period December 1st, 2022, and the November 30th, 2023.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin, on item 21.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIO 006322, Ordinance, Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Emergency Telephone Systems Board of the County of DuPage, State of Illinois, for the period beginning December 1st, 2022, and ending November 30th, 2023.
With a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DiCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Sworzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori. And member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIR 046722, resolution authorization to transfer funds from the general fund to the Veterans Assistance Commission for fiscal year 2023 up to but not to exceed $690,285.
Leave is granted, member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move approval of FIO 006922, ordinance, annual appropriation ordinance for the Veterans Assistance Commission of DuPage County, State of Illinois, for the fiscal period beginning December 1st, 2022 and ending November 30th, 2023.
Leave is granted, member Chaplin.
And finally, I move approval of the fiscal year 2023 financial plan.
Leave is granted, thank you, member Chaplin, sign report, onto the order of development, member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, first, I'd like to congratulate and thank you for your years of service as chairman of this county board, and I wish you and your family nothing but health and happiness in the future.
Thank you.
Moving on, I move approval of DCO 23-22, a change order to county contract 4673-1, SERP issued to Acela Inc., per contract increase of $5,726.36 for four additional licenses for public works and building and zoning, resulting in an amended contract total of $923,268.27.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Sworzy. And member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of DCO 70-22, ordinance zoning 22-41, Steeple Run Elementary, to approve a conditional use for a school addition to include a new 10,630-foot square, classroom addition and a variation reduced the rear yard setback from the required 50 feet to approximately five feet. Uh, this was denied at the zoning Board of Appeals, however unanimously approved at the Development Committee, therefore requiring if, uh, this board wishes to approve it, a three-fourths or 14 vote majority.
Second.
And a motion and a second, is there a request for a roll call, request for leave, leave is granted. Mr. Tornatori.
As a point of work, can we do that when it requires 14 votes, Mr.?
It would be my preference for clarity that you do a roll call.
Okay, roll call then, please, Mr. Chairman.
Nobody asked for a roll call, so, um, I thought it was unanimous, but yes, probably more prudent for the record, so, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin. Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Sworzy. And member Selman.
Okay, the resolution is adopted, Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of DCO 71-22, ordinance zoning 2247, Herrick Lake Equestrian, to approve a conditional use for a principal recreational use in the R2 zoning district for stables and a riding academy, and a conditional use to allow an existing pole barn to remain less than 20 feet from the west interior setback where it has existed for at least five years, the zoning Board of Appeals, uh, voted no recommendation with 3-3, as well as the Development Committee's 3-3 vote.
Has been a motion and a second, has there been a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. DeCiani, we have a number of people seeking recognition for purposes of discussion, first and foremost, Sheila Rutledge.
Thank you, chairman, um, and my best to you in your next life, so thank you for your service here.
Want to ride more horses, I think.
Maybe, you never know. As I spoke at the Development Committee, full disclosure, I lived directly across the street from this property for 27 years, I was there when this partnership was, uh, made that allowed them the agriculture exemption to be able to build a barn, I'm also a 12-year volunteer at the Nada Equestrian, but I hung around there a lot longer than that, uh, so I'm going to speak on behalf of the horses today, uh, because that seems to be a part of this conversation that really hasn't happened. At the Nada Equestrian, we also have 18 horses, but they enjoy 500 acres, um, we have four separate herds basically there, there is something in the horse world called herd dynamics, and you can't just put, however many horses you're going to put together, uh, without a, a get-to-know period, I guess is the best way to say that, in the horse world, uh, there are leaders in the herd and there are submissives in the herd, and if you put two leaders in the herd together, that's going to cause problems, so, um, for various reasons, we have four different herds at the Nada for dietary, for who gets along with who, uh, for elderly and blind, we have one of those over there, so, um, 2.7 acres to me is just not big enough for 18 horses, and I think it seems that the argument is, well, that barn is there, there's 18 stalls, so let's ask for 18 horses, I, I might be more amenable to this if they reduce the number of horses that they were going to put there, uh, but 18 is just too many. I will say that I have spoken to people that have their horses there, and they're very pleased with the facility and the care their horses are getting, but that's just five horses that are there. The, the fact that nobody is there overnight, and they said that the, uh, you know, the video cameras will summon help right away, I believe that if there were to be a fire, which in the last, I think, three or four years, we've had two big events, one was the kennel fire, uh, where dogs were caged in, they could not get out, and they perished in that fire, the other was not very far from the subject property, that there was a large barn fire, and fortunately, the houses, the horses were out on pasture that day, so, uh, no issues there, but to say that because there had not been a problem, there would not be one going forward, I think is short-sighted, um, let's see. Uh, I think that if there were that kind of an emergency, the veterinarian that lives right next door would be compelled to, to service those animals despite the fact that he's against that, and the last thing I'll say is that when we issue a conditional use, we ask the neighboring properties how they feel about that, and everybody is opposed to this as, as it's stated here, so I cannot support this 18 horses on this property, um, so that's what I have to say to it.
Further discussion, uh, member Covert. Sadia Covert.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also wish you the best, uh, moving forward, and lots of golf and fun. So I visited the, uh, Herrick Lake Equestrian Center yesterday, and, uh, nobody was there at the time, however, I was greeted by a horse named Stu, very friendly. They, I noticed that the, it was very clean, the facility was very clean, there were about five horses out, they were grazing, um, and, and you know, I, I also had some concerns on zoning and the number of horses before, but I received more information, specific information, on this matter that I didn't see in my packet before, and regarding the number of horses, the 18 horses, um, my understanding is that they will not be out all at once, they will rotate, um, also, you know, looking at all the information, reviewing the information I had, uh, last week, the petitioner has demonstrated that the zoning relief is necessary to allow the existing 25-year barn, horse stable, and riding arena to continue through the conditional use zoning relief, the petitioner has demonstrated that the proposed use is consistent with the historic 25-year use of the property as it was permitted as an agricultural use by the state law and county zoning ordinance, and also, the issue at hand is a result of a civil dispute and business contract dissolution between two adjacent property owners, and not the result of any issues relating to the historic land use as a horse barn and riding stable, namely, nothing has changed with the use of the property over the past 25 years, uh, nor will it change with the proposed zoning relief, um, the use as an 18-stall horse barn and riding arena has remained the same for the last 25 years without incident, and granting the zoning relief will enable horse owners in DuPage County a reasonable location to board their horses and to ride their horses onsite, plus, again, they're connected to several, uh, trails, and, um, it's a wonderful property, clean facility, the horses were healthy, and, um, I, I support this resolution for ordinance, thank you.
Further discussion, Paula Garcia.
Yeah, thank you, um, I'm just gonna speak about the code, uh, that, that, uh, this is actually a lot that does not have a primary residence on it, and so perhaps, this, I mean, we have to actually look at that in terms of, uh, whether this is allowed for the code or not, and it's not, we need to have a primary residence on this property for it to be considered to be able to have a stable, I, I'm also concerned that there's not someone there full-time to actually, uh, take care of, I know there's cameras, but, um, it's, it's really a concern of mine that there is not anyone there in case there is an emergency, um, so I think these are things that need to be taken into consideration when voting on this, thank you.
Okay, further discussion, anyone, anyone? Oh, Mr. DeCiani filed by Mr. Tornatori.
Looking at the situation and also looking at the lack of, of ability to ride horses in DuPage County, we, we talked about the soccer stadium that took over as a stable, uh, I believe that was in Willbrook area, um, we're losing our ability to, uh, to enjoy, uh, horse, horseback riding, um, one of the things that, that, you know, this property is very unique in that it's really surrounded by forest reserve, the neighbors are, forest, which actually is, uh, in agreement on the site, and was in agreement on the site back 27 years ago when the site was created, um, having this little girl next to me who's out running around right now, but, uh, she opened up the animals, uh, kids with autism oftentimes don't open up the people, but they open up the animals, and I remember when she first rode that horse, and was non-verbal, and, uh, had a hard time with gravity and sensory issues, uh, that horse, which she later called a neigh, because she can actually say neigh, um, was one of her favorite, uh, things, uh, almost like a person to her, um, so, you know, I, I really don't want to deny any family an opportunity to, uh, enjoy those, those services, and we are in huge shortage of these services, so given the fact that this has already been granted a conditional use, and we actually have people here that are using it that are very positive about the facility, I would like to see us try to support this, I think the uniqueness with the trails, over nearly 500 acres of forest reserve that is connected to this, uh, parcel, makes it very unique, it's met stormwater ordinances, uh, I know that was, that was brought up, uh, I, I don't know what more Ts they can cross and Is they to dot, uh, and also keep, uh, a gem in our county, so, uh, I'll be supporting this, uh, this ordinance, thank you.
Uh, further discussion, I had somebody else before, but who, it was Mr. Tornatori to close?
I'd like to close if there's no one else.
Okay, uh, member Rutledge for a second time, and, sir, Mr. Tornatori to close.
Thank you, chairman, I just want to point out that, um, there was no conditional use granted on this property, they are not compliant right now, and the 18 horses, uh, because of the, the, uh, corporation of the property to the west, they got the, um, agricultural use, so that was not part of that process. Now we're at a point where it is just that 2.7 acres, and I don't believe any other property in the county would be granted a conditional use for three times the number of horses that our ordinance requires, and I, I worry that this will open a, a box of a lot of small properties that are gonna try to put a lot of horses on there, so, um, again, I'm not supporting.
Okay, uh, Mr. Tornatori to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, first, as it relates to, uh, this isn't a rezoning, it's, it's for conditional uses, so let's be clear about that, there are conditions which, uh, are, have been imposed on the property owner, relating to cameras, I think that's a business decision for the property owners and the, the people who board their horses there, if they're confident and comfortable with cameras as opposed to someone being there, that's, uh, something for them, um, regarding whether this sets a precedent or not, members of the zoning, uh, Board of Appeals, as well as the, uh, uh, Development Committee, know that each individual property, uh, stands on its own, there is no precedent, so what happens here doesn't mean the same thing's going to happen somewhere else within the county, uh, at one point, this was an agricultural use, it had 18 stalls, that agricultural use was lost when the property owners who agreed to join their properties at five acres plus, um, no longer were in business together, and they split, uh, they're no longer partners, but they are still neighbors, and therein lies the rub, you have two neighbors who are, one neighbor is opposed to continuing to do, or could do, what this property was built to do, which was have 18 stalls, if the objector believed that 18 stalls were too many, for too many horses, then it's different than what that very person believed when that barn was built some time ago when he was partners with the petitioner, again, I think this is a neighborly dispute, um, that is between the neighbors, um, unlike, uh, member Rutledge, I don't live across the street, nor am I a horse owner, but I can tell you that when there's something that was built for 18 horses, and nothing essentially has changed but for the number of horses that may or may not be there, and there is plenty of room for these horses, as I understand it, to move forward, uh, I certainly would be in favor of this ordinance, it will vote accordingly, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, there, uh, good robust conversation, uh, we've had a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
No.
Member Sworzy. And member Selman.
Are you kidding me? You changed your vote!
Chairman votes aye.
For the horses.
Ayes for horses. Simple majority.
14. 14, 14.
I gotta check out this place, Mark Daniel, we, I'd like to see it someday.
Yes. Thank you. Um, so, okay, that was fun, moving on to the next order of business entitled Economic Development.
Mr. Chairman, I still have one other item.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me, forgive me.
That's okay, uh, item D, I move approval of action item, this is to approve placing on file the Building and Zoning Community Rating Service Flood Insurance Promotion Assessment Report.
There's been a motion and a second, uh, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Sworzy. And member Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, fine report. Mr. Tornatori, on to the order of economic development, member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move on EDP 328-22, an approval for a contract purchase order to Dell Marketing for Microsoft 360 Software, the contract covers January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025, for a contract total not to exceed $37,120.79.
There's been a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori. Member Zay. Member Chaplin. Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. And member Sworzy.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move on ED CO 24-22, an amendment to Contract 6028-1 SERP issued to Parents Alliance Employment Project for Youth Training Services, this will increase the contract encumbrance by $50,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, member Ashley Selman, a fine report, your finest, uh, on to the order of environmental, member Rutledge.
Thank you, chairman, um, so last weekend, on Friday and Saturday, we offered four hours of, uh, campaign sign recycling, because we all understand the blight on the landscape that we've had to live with for the last couple of, uh, months, and it was wildly successful, on Friday, we went from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, and at 4:00 o'clock, I got a phone call that the dumpster was already full.
They're hard to break down, though, aren't they, the corrugated ones?
Well, and that's why you can't put it in a curbside recycling, so Lake Shore Recycling has said, yes, we can find a place for that plastic.
Lake Shore Recycling, they're a nice group of people, trying to do the right thing, aren't they?
Yes, so, uh, and, and to their credit, I made a phone call to them Friday afternoon, and I was like, can you please trade, change out this dumpster this evening so that we can continue tomorrow from 10 to noon, and they accommodated that request, thank you very much to them for that, and when I got there at 9:30 the following morning, that dumpster was already half-full, so clearly there is a need for that, and we ended up turning away people because the wind was blowing, the signs were going, uh, so, we are going to do yet another dumpster on this Saturday from 10 to 12, so if you could spread that amongst your, uh, candidates and elected officials, that we will still be recycling those campaign signs, because clearly there was a need, and the wind, uh, forecast for And the wind forecast for Saturday is only five miles an hour, which will be easy. But I am going to ask that please do not put your signs in there. If the bin is not attended, I plan on being there, because if we can stack them in there more uniformly, we can get a lot more storage out of the dumpster, and hopefully, this will take care of the need that we currently have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Onto the order of ETSB, Member Sworzy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve item ETSR 92-22, a resolution approving the transfer of inventory from the County of DuPage on behalf of the Emergency Telephone System Board of DuPage County to DuCom.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Sworzy.
Aye.
Member Salmon. Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Ciani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
And Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Sworzy. Onto the order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHSR 478-22, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of Fourth Modification for an ESG COVID Response Agreement with DuPage Pads, project number ESCV19G, extending the project completion date through December 31st, 2022.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Sworzy.
Aye.
Member Salmon. Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Ciani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHSR 479-22, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of Third Modification to CDBG Agreement with the Care Center, project CD20-07, steam generated replacement, extending the project completion date through December 30th, 2022.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHSR 480-22, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of Second Modification to CDBG Agreement with City of West Chicago, project CD21-03, Fair Meadows Subdivision Rehab, extending the project completion date through October 31st, 2023.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHSR 41-22, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of a Home Investment Partnerships Agreement with Community Housing Advocacy and Development, project HM21-04, 796 Wilson Avenue Rehab, in the amount of $177,795.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHSP 326-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Valdez Supply to Furnish and Deliver Paper Products, Restroom Tissue, Paper Towels, Facial Tissue, Hard Roll Towels, as needed for the Care Center, December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, not to exceed $98,808.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of HHSP 327-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract to Air Gas USA LLC to Furnish and Deliver Liquid Portable Oxygen for the Care Center, December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, not to exceed $35,000.
Leave is granted.
I move approval, authorization for overnight travel. This is for the Weatherization Assessor to go to mandatory soft skills training in Springfield December 19th and 20th, 2022, for $470.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of Change Order, HHSP 319A-22, Amendment to Resolution, HHSP 31921, issued to Jormans Healthcare LLC, the rental of Adolphin Fluid Immersion Simulation Mattress System Beds for the Care Center, August 8th, 2021 through August 20, I'm sorry, August 8th, 2022, increasing the encumbrance by $13,300.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of Change Order, HHSP 419-21, Amendment to Resolution, HHSP 419-21, issued to Pulmonary Exchange Limited for Rental of Respiratory Care Equipment to Increase Encumbrance in the amount of $9,600.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan, a fine report. Onto Judicial Public Safety, Member Renahan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple items here. As we all know, this board approved the purchase of a Bearcat armored vehicle for the sheriff earlier this year, and I understand it has arrived, and apparently, it's quite impressive to look at, 1:30 this afternoon.
Right around it.
Out in front of the sheriff's building. If anybody wants to take a look or photo op or whatever, you are welcome, and UnderSheriff Moore is on extending that. The second thing I'd like to announce, JPS in conjunction with IT Department, the DuPage County Police Transparency and Crime Statistics Portal had launched yesterday, and so that will provide residents with, right now, just the sheriff's information being pulled on crime stats. In the future, it may include municipalities layered on top, too, to be determined by future boards. So, a special thank you to IT Director Anthony McPherson, to Tom Ricker and his team, just doing incredible work with the ARC GIS, IT Chair Ashley Salmon, and the Sheriff Department, Dan Bilidou. So, great work there. I move approval of JPSP 323-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to DuPage County Health Department to Provide Mental Health Services for Mentally Ill Probationers for Probation and Court Services, December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, not to exceed 208,000. I'm sorry, 208,000, yes.
Yeah. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Sworzy.
Aye.
Member Salmon.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Ciani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And Member Pachalski.
Thank you very much. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 324-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Ray O'Hare and Company for Officer and Employee Uniforms for the Sheriff's Office, December 30th, 2022 through December 29th, 2023, in the amount of $225,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 325-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Krista M. Winters of Mullen Winters and Cerny PC to Provide Professional Services, Conflict Attorney for Juvenile Cases, December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, for the Court, not to exceed $42,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you. Is there one more item? No, that was it. Thank you very much, a fine report. Onto the order of Legislative for a Committee Update, Member Dawn Desart.
Thank you. Nothing at this time, Chairman.
You usually have some nice tidbits of information, but thank you for the brevity today. Onto the order of Public Works, Member Mary Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMR 0474-22, Third Amendment to Lease, dated April 6, 1976, between the County of DuPage and the DuPage County Fair Association.
There's been a motion and a second, seconded by Member LaPlante. Mr. Pierce, please call, oh, questions? Oh, did you? They're fighting over you, Jim, you see that? Thank you very much. There's been a motion and a second. Chad Pierce, would you please call the roll?
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Sworzy.
Aye.
Member Salmon.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Ciani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
And Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP 0318-22, Recommendation for the Approval of an Agreement between the County of DuPage, Illinois, and V3 Companies to Provide Phase 2 Professional Stormwater Engineering Design Services for Various Campus Projects for Facilities Management for the Period December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2024, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $248,355, Professional Services Qualification embedded.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP 0319-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Interstate Power Systems Incorporated to Provide Parts and Labor for Scheduled Preventive Maintenance and on and as needed basis to Maintain and Repair Generators at the Standby Power Facility for Facilities Management for the Period January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $118,510.47, Competitive Bids, Sole Authorized Parts and Service Provider.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of PWP 0320-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Flender Corporation for the Rebuild and Replacement of Flender OEM Gearbox Components, Gears, Bearings, Splines, and Pinions for Public Works for the Period November 22nd, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, for a Contract Total Amount Not to Exceed $37,455, Competitive Bid Not Suitable for Competitive Bids.
I don't know what splines are. I don't know what they are, do you? Just curious. All right. There's been a motion and a second. Request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
I move for approval of FMP 0321-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to AMS Industries to Provide Component Replacements and Upgrades for the HVAC Chilled Water System Improvements at the Power Plant for Facilities Management for the Period December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2024, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $1,209,330 per Lowest Responsible Bid, ARPA Item.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
And I move for approval of PWP 0322-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Curry Motors Fleet for the Purchase of 1 2023 Ford F-550 XL Diesel Truck and 1 2023 Ford F-350 XL Diesel Truck for Public Works, and 2 Ford F-350 XL Diesel Trucks for Stormwater, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $240,597, Not Suitable for Competitive Bids.
Leave is granted.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you give me a quick second.
Sure.
I should have said this in my Chairman's remarks, but I have really enjoyed being the Chair of Public Works and have had a great time working with our committee, and they do a wonderful job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Very nice. Onto the order of Technology, Member Ashley Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just by way of committee update, and we discussed this morning, this this morning in Technology Committee, employees, as well as board members and other elected officials will start seeing their cybersecurity training, hit their inboxes in the next couple of weeks. Be sure you take it. It's a good way to just refresh your skills, and as all of us know, the biggest security threat is the users of the system. So, just a good reminder to get that taken care of. Next, I move on TEP 330-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to BDO USA Solutions Provider LLC for Annual Software Maintenance of our FireEye Security Software, December 10th, 2022 through December 9th, 2023, for a Total of $149,468 per Lowest Responsible Bid, and this is an ARPA Item.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Salmon.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Ciani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. And Member Schworzy.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk. Member Selman.
Just one more. I move on T E C O twenty-five dash twenty-two, amendment to County Contract sixty nineteen dash one dash SERV, issued to Learning Tree International for educational training vouchers. We're purchasing an additional three. It's a total of fifty-nine eighty-five for a thirty percent increase.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Selman, a fine report. Again, onto the Order of Transportation, Member Don Pachalski.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be chairman of transportation during the twelve years you were chairman. It was a huge honor. I love being on transportation. I love working with you and doing projects. And then, thank you for everything you've done for me individually, professionally and politically, because you have been huge. And I cannot thank you enough. I appreciate everything you've done. That being done, I would move to approve D T R oh four seven six dash twenty-two, a resolution for condemnation authorization for R O W acquisition along Lamont Road from Eighty-Fifth Street to Eighty-Third Street, section sixteen dash zero zero two, three two, dash zero zero C H.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Schworzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori. Member Zay. Member Chaplin. Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. And Member Phillips.
Check every.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to change order, D T P zero one three six A dash twenty-two, amendment to a resolution issued to Pacific Construction Services LLC for the removal and replacement of the Division of Transportation's off-site maintenance facility to increase the funding amount of six hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents, resulting in amended contract in amount of seven million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Pachalski. And I, too, have had a wonderful experience working with you all these years. I just think you're a hell of a guy, and you're very devoted to county government and transportation issues. So, thank you. It's been an honor. Onto, well, now that concludes all of our committee reports. We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business, things that happened in the past. Mr. Schworzy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this, uh.
Thank you.
These comments are directed towards you and to Member Hart, Member Pachalski, Member Renahan, Member Selman, Member Phillips and Member DeCiani. Just first of all, thank you for, for all your service. In the short two years I've had a chance to get to know most of you, in, in some way, you guys provided certainly leadership, mentorship, and, and, and most importantly, friendship. And I just want to wish you all best wishes. And please, please reach out anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw someone else, Mr. DeCiani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to give a sincere thanks to staff. It's been a pleasure and honor to work with all of you, working from the County Board Chair's office, Sally and, and Joan, Cheryl, Rosie, you know, a great group of people, Nick Cottonmeyer, and all the department heads from Transportation and Stormwater. And we've got a lot done. And it wouldn't be, if it wasn't for the staff helping us move our, our policy forward and executing, you know, we wouldn't have all the good works that we have before us. I also wanted to congratulate our new chairwoman, who carried many of those laws, by the way, that I spoke about, Annie Legere Law, our, our county clerk law that we, with the merger of the Election Commission, many of the laws that we pushed forward through were, were actually carried and chief sponsored by Debbie. And I want to wish her nothing but the best to her family and to this next board. I wish you all the very best of goodness, bipartisanship and getting things done. Because at the end of the day, it's about helping people. So, thank you.
Further discussion, commentary, anyone, anyone, anyone? We move on to the next order of business entitled New Business. New Business, looking forward. Anyone have anything they want to share on a prospective look? Mr. Hart.
I don't know if it's perspective, but I just wanted to echo the comments to you, Mr. Chairman, for all your years of service and the impact you left on this county. Thank you for devoting thirty-plus years of your life to this line of work. We need good people to do these roles, and I think you filled that bill. You know, just to touch on something that Pete said as well, you know, this place would not function as well as it does without everyone sitting over there. Joan, Nick, Cheryl, every department head. It's just been an honor and a privilege to work with each of you over the last five years, in my case. And I just can't tell you how proud all of us are for the work that you've done because we wouldn't be the county that people want to move to without all of your hard work. And it's just been an honor and a privilege getting to know each of you personally and professionally. And then, lastly, just in my case, to the residents of District Three who allowed me to, to be here, and to all of my colleagues, it was great working with you. And I look forward to seeing all the great things this board will do in the future. I, too, wish the new chairwoman all the success in the world and the board that's seated here and the board that's going to continue all the success that you can have to make this a great place to live, work and raise family. So, thank you.
Fabulous. Very nice. Anyone else? Anyone else? Member LaPlante.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm going to echo what everyone said about our departing board members. Thank you to everyone here who's been so welcoming and helpful. And it was a pleasure and privilege to serve with you. Special thanks to you, Chairman Cronin, for your wonderful example of bipartisan leadership. That's what's needed. You paved the way, and you showed us how it could be done. And I really appreciate that. I, I was surprised. I'm going to be real honest. And you really exceeded all of my expectations in terms of your showing the way to work together, always having the best interests of the people of DuPage County at your heart. So, thank you, and I will continue that. And I hope the rest of us and the new board and our new chair, we do the exact same thing because I think this is the best way to work. So, thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you.